Wait, we didn't compliment Ted's beard. Ted, looking good.
Oh, yes, also.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That tower beer.
Yeah, everybody's looking great. Now we've got that. Now I can call the meeting to order. So I'll call the meeting to order at West Newbury Planning Board, November nineteenth. And it is seven oh one P M. First item on the agenda is to review the proposed battery storage zoning bylaw. Uh, and we're gonna review that with the building commissioner. Sam's here. I've actually got it, so I'm gonna jump right in and put this up.
Right, and if you have a problem, I am all set to go too.
Excellent. I've got lots of problems, but it's not a therapy session tonight. Let's see here, is that? Can we see this?
Yep.
You're getting there, yeah.
So Sam.
Yes.
How's it been going?
Good, good. Uh, so.
What do you, what do you have for us? Is it, is it all squared away? Is everything understood and it's perfect?
Absolutely. So I did implement the changes that were suggested, got rid of the tier one, tier two, so we only have a single tier system.
Are you good with that? Because that's radical.
You know, again, I, I, it's to each community's preference. Uh, for whatever reason, Groveland thought two tiers was good. I didn't really see the benefit, but you know, uh, I, I, I don't get a, I don't get a vote, so I, I just get to smitten, fingers crossed, things are, are good. Uh, the other part that was, um, adjusted was the battery size for the smaller systems that were not captured by this. I did speak with the, uh, fire engineer regarding, you know, would it, would it matter if we just rounded up to a hundred? He said absolutely not, because NFPA is gonna capture it anyway. So, uh, that'll probably save us some aggravation if they tweak numbers. So I, I, I think that was a good, good call. I've actually done that in Groveland as part of a just, uh, revision over there. Uh, just, I, I just don't wanna keep having to adjust it to match NFPA. And in this way, it, uh, kinda lets us off the hook.
Excellent. Well, we, we like to be influencers, so.
Yeah, you know what, um? I, I like the input.
Good, so.
Hey, wait, 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 stop, back up a little bit, setbacks. I just wanted to read that section on setbacks.
Okay. Fifty feet from all side, from all lines.
Okay. Or a hundred.
Or.
Or a hundred, yeah.
If you're abutting a residential zoning district, a street.
What that does is if you're in a industrial or business type zone, you get a a lesser setback, but if it's residential, it pushes you a little further into the, uh, into the woods.
Gotcha. Should, should it be said right here? From rear front lot lines that have but, or across the street from, or are within residential zoning districts?
Well, the parcel would have but, right? Well, that, 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 Sam, have you been contacted by anybody from either the Episcopal Diocese or Solvay Battery about possibly putting a lithium storage battery in the parking lot of All Saints Church?
Briefly, and I, it didn't seem like after we talked, it was, um, I don't know, I got the impression that they were going away, but, um, maybe that's not the case.
Um, we haven't heard that.
Okay, good.
I, I'm, I am the clerk and treasurer of All Saints Church. Um, and, and we thought that they were still waiting to hear from National Grid, whether National Grid thought that the site was uh, worthy of consideration. But I'm, I'm, I'm glad at least you're aware of them. Thank you.
Yeah, so it was that one and, um, the lot at the end of Major Boyd Drive. Um, the one at the end of Major Boyd Drive seems to have lost interest at this point. And, uh, like I said, the, the church, they came and asked their questions and kind of went off. Um, maybe they just got their answers and, but it just, I don't know, they just seemed to go away pretty quickly, so I, I don't know if they're.
Well, if, 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 if we approve this, I, I would like to forward this to them so that they can take it into consideration if they're still working on this.
So, um, being a bylaw, you know, we have to hold a public hearing on this.
Ah, okay.
It, and it has to be.
Be voted on, yeah.
Voted at town meeting.
Yes. Um, I'm gonna propose to, uh, to everyone here that we just, uh, take one quick look, sort of page by page across this. Uh, it's kinda in the same way that we do minutes. And, uh, if that's, is that any, is that good with everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we have reviewed this carefully. Um, Sam, as I, as I go through this, if there's anything that pops out for you to point out a change, then go ahead and do that.
Really, the only changes again were the getting rid of the tier one and those, uh,
Yep.
threshold levels. Uh, I, I found some punctuation issues that I, I corrected. Um, other than that, uh, nothing, nothing else major.
Gotcha. So we're not gonna be able to rent out one of these for, uh, I don't know, college kid? Okay, everybody good with definitions? Gonna go to applicability and general requirements then? So we're choosing a hundred kilowatt hours as the, uh, dividing line? That makes sense to me.
Yes.
Um, do you, do you state that the planning board is the special permit granting authority anywhere?
I believe so. It's been a little bit since I've read.
Yeah, let's get there.
Oh, but I, I believe so.
I'll be near the end.
Certainly not me.
Sam, is that how you express the, uh, capacity is that kilowatt hours?
Yes. Yeah, and most of your homes, you're not looking anywhere near a hundred kilowatt hours, uh, for a single family or two-family residence. Um, most of your battery systems may be, you know, thirty, forty. I, I mean, if you're really, uh, I, I, I guess really trying to show off to your neighbors, you get them to be seventy, but.
Just as a, as a point of reference, Tim, a, a single Tesla wall pack is roughly around fifteen kilowatt hours.
I see.
And, and. And a kilo, a kilowatt hour is, is a, is a measure of potential energy. And so that means, you know, if you've got one kilowatt hour, if you've got a fifteen kilowatt hour battery storage systems, you could run fifteen kilowatts off it over a course of an hour before you drained it out.
Yeah.
Although in practical use, you don't wanna run the batteries down to zero.
Uh, even the largest house I've seen has been three of the Tesla power walls, uh, which is still under fifty, so we're not even halfway to the hundred. Um, and, and that was kinda, you know, even the installer said it was kind of a, you know, just showing off, not really ever gonna use that, ever gonna need it, but
I don't know.
Wanted it, so if they wanna pay for it, then, uh,
Yeah.
Oh, good.
We'll see, we'll see how things change over time.
That's right, as the state of the art changes, we can always amend the bylaw.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and maybe those, maybe those guys are the smart ones that put it in.
Who knows?
Does it, does the NFPA refer to kilowatt hours as the appropriate capacity? Yeah, perfect, okay.
Yeah, and in that, in the prior, uh, addition, it broke it down by type of battery.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
So it's a discharge potential capacity is basically what that is, like Ray was saying.
Yeah, and, and per, I think it was Ray's suggestion that we just round up to a hundred and that we wouldn't worry about battery type or any of that.
You know, there, there are all kinds of analogies between water systems and electrical systems.
Yeah, right.
So, uh, kilowatt hour is basically the volume of.
Covers them, yeah. Yep, yeah, no, that, that's an interesting way to do it. Yep.
Yep.
Um, okay, let's, uh, let's take a look here, general requirements. That's all good to me. I assume the West Newbury Fire Department's fine with all this stuff.
Yep, I've, uh, checked with Mike. He had no issue with this. He said, you know, um, again, we're not gonna have a residential typically over a hundred.
Yeah.
Uh, and then as far as the larger ones, this covers everything we could possibly cover. I think in the last meeting, I, I mentioned the Attorney General weighed in, approved Grovelands, but kinda gave me a warning of you're walking a fine line from prohibiting these, which was pretty much where I wanted to be, was I wanna throw everything out there that we could possibly ask as a question, uh, to give us those options. And the A G basically said, as long as we're not using it to prohibit it, uh, we're okay, but to just, uh, he, he gave me a little, uh, little caution.
All right, permitting requirements.
Um, I still haven't seen that the planning board is the special permit granting authority anywhere.
All right. Look, when, when we finish going page by page, we'll figure out where to stick that in. Okay. All right. Uh, here I am scrolling off before asking, everybody okay with me scrolling forward?
Yep.
All right. So, uh, this language covers what, what I'm about to ask. Uh, is there any benefit to, um, using the phrase cutoff, full cutoff lighting or anything like that?
It's directed downward, but.
Yeah.
Do you want more specificity?
I don't know, I just, I don't wanna be. Yeah, you, well, you know how.
Right.
We've always been concerned about, about light pollution.
But that describes it, and we have an opportunity to comment in the review.
Okay.
And there should be pretty limited lighting on site.
There should be. You know, I was getting awful picky about saying, or within residential zoning districts. I think that's a little, I mean, it's fine the way it is.
Yeah, let's just take a look at that, Ray.
Yep, so, um.
So it says it's a but, or across the street from residential zoning district or existing, or existing single two family, single, sorry, two-family and multifamily, so that's how you capture it, I think, right? Let's see. So if it's not in the district, I guess, if it, a buts.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, a residence, right?
The grammar side of me, my, my editor wants to say that are, that a but comma are across the street from, comma, or within a residential zoning district.
Yep.
Yeah, I, that's fine. I think, I think that's a good change.
Katrina, did you get that? Somebody, we, some, one of us should make sure to write that down.
Okay, so what, I was still looking for the other thing.
Right, so, uh, what we're at here is we're in nine point ten point five E. And we've got a change to the fourth line here. And it, and it will say lot lines that a but, comma, are across the street from, comma, or are within a resident, or residential zoning districts. And then I think you could probably just eliminate this.
No, I think, I think you want that too, don't you?
You might wanna keep that in case there's a residential structure that's in some oddballs.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
But I think you have to, because the grammar's a little screwed up now, um, I think you have to say or a but, or are across the street from, I think you have to repeat that language.
Or you could say, okay, that a but comma are across the street from, comma, or are within a residential zoning district.
Or a but, or across the street from, and existing.
There you go.
Getting pretty wild, okay.
Or a but, or.
Are across the street from existing single two-family and multifamily structures. So that gets a little repetitive, but at least it's unambiguous.
And that pretty much covers everything.
Yeah, yeah. In West Newbury, anyway.
Well said, Sam.
Now, one of the things that I noticed, uh, under dimensional, it says that we're gonna comply with limitations for principal structures. The only problem I have there, and I don't think it would ever happen, but I gotta, I gotta just get your input here, is that we allow residential buildings to be up to thirty feet tall, right?
Uh, thirty-five.
Thirty-five. And these things tend to be the size of shipping containers. And I, I could conceive of one where you might stack them and, and get two shipping containers tall. But the idea of having a thirty-five foot tall battery storage facility is a little unsettling to me. I mean, would we want to limit height here?
And as of right now, I've not seen anything more than a single-story storage container size.
Yeah, me neither.
Uh, we certainly could either try and limit it now or get it at some other point. But I think the, the problem with that is with heat directing upwards and thermal runaway issues.
It's, they're just not gonna do it, right?
And it's, it's not, I mean, I'd never say never, but I don't think right now it's very likely, at least for a good amount of time, moving forward.
I agree, it's not likely. Everybody then, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, fencing. Yeah, there, I'm, I'm going slow here because these are likely the things that are gonna come up in a, in.
Right.
During.
Yes.
Like people are gonna focus on these things.
Right.
Yeah, and these were all the things that I threw in there as things we can require or deal, you know, add as protections for neighbors. Uh, so I tried to add as many pieces that I could from other bylaws, from, you know, model bylaws, whatever, just again, throwing everything.
Right, so fencing, are good with fencing?
Yeah.
Cause we don't want little Jimmy going in there and lighting himself up.
No.
Okay, screening and visibility. All right, mitigation.
Well, that's an interesting one.
It is.
That'll make French and Anya and the tree committee very happy. I'm serious.
Yeah.
All right. Mitigation for trails.
There you go.
Um.
That's thoughtful.
Did, did we miss the part that said that the, um, electric lines should be underground rather than poles? I, I, I noted it at one point, but I didn't see it go by just now.
I don't think we've gotten there yet.
This is more site stuff. I know. Yeah, no, I know, I just.
Here it is.
There we go.
There it is, right at the top.
All right, so the, the Solvay battery design that has been shared with us for what, you know, the first iteration included adding tel- telephone poles to get from Main Street back to the battery, adding as many as seven utility poles. Um, I don't know if the, the power that's carried on these can go into underground. Um, I, I mean, I, I, I see.
It can, yeah. Sure can.
It's a big, I suppose.
Yeah, the reason they do that, Deb, is strictly dollars, you know, it's a, it's a much higher cost to go underground.
Okay, but this, this doesn't say you can't go above ground, but it says to the extent.
The extent feasible and permitted, yeah.
By the serving utility, okay, thank you.
I thi, I thought that was pretty good, actually, to the extent feasible, you know, it would only be like, I don't know, even a wetland, right? They directionally drill under it and all that, so.
Right.
You could potentially put it under.
Remember, the planning board will be using the same criteria it uses for other special permits on this too. Um, and they're making the decisions on whether or not it can be underground or above ground.
Good point.
Negotiation.
Okay, so, uh, mitigation for trails, looks good to me. Mitigation for historical resources. Pre-Columbian features.
I'm sure we got some.
Yeah, plenty.
Don't get me started on, uh.
Haven't found them.
We gotta find a new, new terminology, though. The Columbus references are supposed to be.
You work on that, Tim.
I will.
Just call out the year and be done with it. Um, batteries.
That's what we always do for these kinds of equipment things, right?
Yeah. Decommissioning. Good to have this in here.
Same, similar, yep. Fund and insurance, also quite typical.
Is there a bond? Uh, did I see a bond?
There's a fund, I don't know how that works.
Bond.
Fund or others.
Okay, fund or.
Form approved by the planning board and town council.
Okay, that sounds good.
Potentially a lot.
Right.
Here's the application, this has gotta talk about it. About the. Let's see.
Okay, so this is what they gotta give us. I'm good with this, may I move on?
Mm-hmm. What's the, hang on, what's the Planning and Economic Development Board?
Uh, you know, I gotta, that's a cut and paste, um, get rid of the, uh, and economic development.
The planning board, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Did you get that, Katrina?
Yep.
Nine, ten, six. Delete and economic development.
Thank you, Ian.
Good catch.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, commissioning plan.
So section three point five may be the wrong number two of the zoning bylaw.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so we need to check that.
Check that.
Yeah, double check that, so I may have, uh, you know, there's a benefit and a detriment to doing two towns. Can steal info, but sometimes you steal the wrong info.
Is it two general to say, um, applicable sections? Again, so we don't have to go in and change stuff, or it's better to give the section, I guess?
I think we gotta, have to give the section.
Section, okay.
Cause then, otherwise, people have to figure out what applicable means.
Yeah, right. As usual.
Good try.
Commissioning plan. All right. State codes. Oh, you know something that we didn't mention? Uh, with sound.
Hmm, sound mitigation?
The, yeah, these things are usually really quiet, but I can see a situation where if there was some sort of an annoying buzz, would drive neighbors crazy.
I think they have alarms too.
Well, we might just mention that, uh.
I wanna hear the alarm.
Yeah.
I, is it worth mentioning that it'll comply with our, our noise bylaw?
No, I hate that noise bylaw.
Oh.
We need to delete it.
What do we do? Do we just delete it outright, or what do we do instead, Sam?
Uh, something definitely instead, cause the problem with it right now is it requires, I think it's seventy-two hours of ambient noise measure. And then followed by so many hours of the disruptive noise, which we don't have the equipment to measure noise, nor do we have the manpower to sit someone out there for uh, half a week to.
Are you sure, are you sure you got the West Newbury bylaw there when you're saying this?
I believe so. I, I think.
I think, I think ours was just, we had.
Decibel level, I think, isn't it?
Frequencies, I don't remember the seventeen, seventy-two hour thing.
Anyway.
I'll look at it, yeah.
Okay.
If you want it in here, it doesn't hurt if you, I, I don't, I don't see it, you know, the alarms are there for a reason.
Yeah.
They make noise.
There's, I, I says, there'd be some phrase in there about normal operating conditions. You know, noise, you know, noise at property line will comply with uh, West Newbury section, whatever it is. And then in the future.
Is it in our zone bylaw?
Yeah, we have.
We're in the general bylaw, I'm not sure where it is.
Yeah, I don't think it's in the zoning.
Yeah, I think it's in the general.
I know I've looked at it.
The zoning bylaw with me, but not the.
Yeah. Well, we have another bite at the apple at the hearing, so we can always.
Yep, yep.
So I'm gonna make a note to look into, um,
noise.
Noise regulation.
Yep.
Good. And then, and then another thing to put on our longer term list is, is to take a look at our noise bylaw, cause if it bugs Sam, I think it's something we should see if we can make better.
Yeah, I don't know how to make it better. That's the problem I've had with it. I look at it and I, I've yet to find a good noise bylaw out there.
Well, you, you haven't taken benefit of this, of this august team.
Exactly, so maybe this is the key.
Who's sensitive to noise?
The problem is, is they're very hard to enforce.
Yes, and that's what I mean by it. I haven't found one that I like. Um, it, it's very subjective usually, or it's so scientifically uh, driven that it makes it hard to prove, so.
I, I think there may be ways to get at this.
Sounds good to me. I'm willing to listen.
I think, I think a lot of towns address noise problems by asking for noise mitigation when they're approving projects. Um, there, there's not much commercial or industry in West Newbury, so you don't have the problems that, you know, a, a town with um, a big commercial district have with the big air conditioning units on the top of buildings.
You don't live right next to our library.
Oh.
No, usually what I deal with is, you know, it's, it's roosters, it's leaf blowers, it's, you know, the, the neighbor's kid plays drums.
Right. It's, what we need is a mediation by law.
Yes.
All right, all right, let's jump back, let's jump back. So these are things that would be required in the application.
I, I think the best place to put the planning board is the permit granting authority is somewhere near applicability or general requirements. Up at the beginning on the first or second page.
I mean, the planning board is the site plan review um, body for this town anyway, so.
And special permit off.
Special permit, so.
And are they the only special permit granting authority? There are no other special permits?
I don't think so.
Doesn't the Z B A?
I don't know if anywhere in the zoning bylaw that calls out special permit for them. I think they're pretty much finding in variants, which is kind of unusual, but I mean, we can certainly clarify it, that doesn't hurt anything.
You can always add it, yep.
In proposed nine, ten, five, it says, subject to this bylaw and require the issuers of a special permit in all zoning districts. So I think this is a good place to say who the special permit granting authority is, no?
Yep.
Yes.
So I think maybe Katrina, you could craft a little language, a sentence to stick into nine, ten, five.
Yep, the second sentence. Yep. Yep.
I could just say by the planning board.
Mm-hmm. Cool.
All right, where, where did we leave off? We were.
We're here, yeah, stuff. And a lot of this is just the documentation of what's already been mentioned as far as electrical and
Yep.
all that stuff.
I, you know, uh, this manual, it's required with the application.
Mm-hmm.
Just from a pragmatic point of view, Sam, is this the sort of thing that ends up available to you guys on your machine? Just from a pragmatic point of view, Sam, is this the sort of thing that ends up available to you guys on your machine? On your computer someplace, or I assume you don't keep a physical notebook someplace?
Uh, depends on the size of it. Uh, there is limitations to our, uh. You know, the capacity and, and our permitting system, so such like the plans for the Kentucky Regional. They're just too big. So I have a separate file in the computer for that with a notation. On the property file, but yeah.
But somehow it's gonna end up in your office accessible.
Yeah, would just be a digital file, it's, you know, in the office, yep.
Yep. Same thing with the emergency operation plan, although I assume that that would also be, oh, there.
Be with fire as well, yep.
Fire police building commissioner, yeah, okay. Because he didn't call out up here. Where it ends up, like it's called out in here.
But that's protected information, that's a little bit different.
Yep. Everybody good there?
Yeah.
Let's not, let's not point this one out.
So it's just in case.
Hey, I've got a propane tank, you know, I mean, relative.
Yeah. All right.
So Sam, if, if a new owner takes over, we don't need to revise the special permit, right?
No, it just, it just comes down to those emergency contacts and. Just knowing who to touch base with for maintenance emergencies, those types of things, but. Just wanted to put it in there that they must notify me so I can let police, fire, everyone else know.
I, I guess I'm not. I'm not clear on what this means, providing that the successor owner or operator assumes in writing, okay, all of it, bump, bump, bump. Should there be anything in here that says you've got to update all the contact information and the plans and all that kind of stuff, something like update? And appropriately update the, uh, operation and maintenance manual.
Uh, shouldn't change your operation and maintenance with a new owner. It's more contact info.
Okay.
Which they need to let.
If you don't, if you don't think that we need to call that out specifically, then that's okay by me.
Nope, they, I mean, they're gonna notify myself, National Grid, and West Newbury Fire. And if there's any additional info we need, we can certainly get it at that time, but.
Okay. Good. So, board, Katrina, what do we do here? Do we have to? Uh, at this point?
Um, I would, I would probably, um, move forward and maybe talk about what date you want to conduct a public hearing. Um, under Mass General Laws forty-eight, section five.
Well, we're aiming for, uh, Springtown meeting, right?
Yeah. I have all the dates right here. Um, are you looking at February or, uh, would you hold this? Um, with all of the other proposed zoning, including MBTA, would you hold this a separate night?
There's gotta be a separate night.
Maybe ADU and this together?
Yes.
So we have February fourth and the eighteenth, and March fourth and the eighteenth.
I think March is too late. We have to make changes. And submit it because town meeting's gonna be the last Monday in April.
How about February fourth for this one? And then with any luck, February eighteenth will be the, uh, MBTA.
Be quite a month.
February fourth would be good for the ADU as well.
Yes.
And before we dive into that tonight, uh, I've been meeting with the Federation of Building Officials with. Uh, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Conditions. They are going one step beyond, uh, providing guidance and are going to create a CMR. So that, uh, guidance is a suggestion, CMR is a must. So we've been working with them to come up with the questions and issues we have with the ADUs, not only in zoning, but through the building code. Through the Mass Planners Association. Uh, they are hoping to have a draft bylaw online bef-. Right around the end of the year with, uh, promulgated regulations prior to the February second deadline. Uh, so once we have those final draft, I think it would be. Better to go back in, make the adjustments to the ADU to mirror those regulations, where right now we. You know, it was kind of a best guess.
All right, hold on right, hold on there.
Sure.
Um, because it's easy for me in my old age to lose my choo-choo of thought. Um.
Train derails, huh?
It does, yeah, I'm easily derailed. Um.
Should we try to?
Uh, for, for the battery energy storage system, storage system, uh, deal, do we need to, uh? Is it helpful to have a little vote here to approve the, uh? The proposed zoning bylaw, the draft zoning bylaw as amended? Public hearing?
Just a draft.
We do it once we hear the public comments and whatnot.
All right.
I think, I think it wouldn't be out of line to, uh, vote to schedule the public hearing. For February fourth.
So I move that we, uh, schedule the public hearing on the BESS proposed zoning bylaw. Uh, February fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Um, any discussion? Not all those in favor, Ray Cook, I?
Brian Murphy, I.
Tim Cronin, I.
Deb Allen, I.
I assume Ann Bardine said I.
Yes, I did say, I'm sorry, yes.
No, no worries, no worries.
So I, I'm kind of, you know, it, it sounds like there's a, uh, it's gonna be a real crunch here, Sam, with, with this, uh. CMR and I, I can see, so I, I'm, I'm just wondering if. We're, we're gonna, this is gonna get kicked after. I don't see how we'll have February fourth able to have a hearing on. ADUs.
And, and we may not. Um, and that, that's the reality, and it, you know, the most likely these, uh. EO HLC is gonna go for emergency promulgation to try and get that in place before February second. Which, whether we have a bylaw in place or not, we're gonna have a law and a CMR to go by. Um, ideally, it would be nice if our bylaw jived with what the state has, but if it doesn't. It doesn't really change much, other than adds a little bit of confusion for people reading the by.
I don't know why I feel like I gotta do this, but I gotta say, moving on to the next agenda item. Uh, let's discuss the, uh. The ADU bylaw.
So, I have a comment. Could I suggest, in case they actually do get this stuff to us by the end of the year, we could sort of preemptively put. A discussion of this topic on our, both of our January agendas, and if we get it, we can make our own revisions and then be ready for a hearing. Try to be a little optimistic.
And you can also open the public hearing, and then if it's too late to incorporate the changes that just came out. Just continue the public hearing, and you can make changes during the public hearing process.
Be nice to only advertise it once, you know?
Right.
Yeah, because at this point, the bylaw, it basically just scratched out, uh, what the state says we can't do. I'm hoping with the, uh, CMR, we understand things like gross floor area, principal dwelling. Uh, single family zoning district. We all have a, uh. Our opinions and what we perceive as our understanding of it. Um, you know, can we condition an OSRD or a subdivision plan? To not have ADUs? Can we condition ownership as far as condos or things of that nature? Um, there's a whole lot of issues that we brought to them as building officials. Uh, also, we brought it to the, um, uh, Office of Public Safety and Inspection to try and get them to reach out to building officials. To understand that in the building code, there's no such thing as an accessory dwelling unit. So you either have a single family home or a two-family home or two separate single family homes. And that changes how we interpret things. Uh, I had one in today where. He was applying for an ADU, but the indoor or one of the doors goes into the main dwelling. Well, under the state definition, that is no longer an ADU. So it has to be a guest suite or an in-law suite. And we've also asked the state to determine. What was prior in ADU one, are those grandfathered? Because if I had a thousand square foot ADU that no longer meets the definition of ADU. Under the state, can then I ask for an ADU? Because I have a single family home with a thousand square foot additional unit. That doesn't meet the definition, so they're working on a lot of those. Silly question, you know, if I have a duplex and each unit is principal, can I have two ADUs? You know, so there's a lot of questions, and again, there's, there's definitely. Uh, a general feel for what our understanding is that the law means to do and what we want to allow. But it doesn't specify, so we're hoping they'll get us tho- those specific answers.
Yeah, I, I didn't, you know, until we spoke about it, uh, I didn't realize just. How you can run into these problems with ambiguities and whatnot, but given what you said tonight. And given that our existing ADU bylaw isn't that far off the mark as it stands.
Yeah.
What I would suggest is that tonight we just sort of table this, pending, uh.
Oh, but I have some changes.
Oh, okay. Well, I've only got, I've only got the two pages here that popped up. So I'm gonna stop sharing. And Katrina, do you want to?
Oh, you mean, okay. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Now we can.
Okay, these are just really small changes, but I just, I just wanted to, um. Bring them to light, um, so down the bottom here.
Can you make that larger, please?
Thanks, Brian.
Yes.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Yep.
I, I, you should see my screen. My screen is like a large screen TV. It's, it's, I'm lost in it right now. Um, so down here at the bottom, number six, adequate off-street parking shall be provided for the accessory dwelling unit. And then the language says not more than one additional parking space shall be required. That rubs, I, I don't like. Starting sentences with that. This sounds like the same language that the state used to tell the towns that not one more. Space could be required. So instead of that, I would put at the minimum, one additional parking space shall be required.
But the state wants you to not, to only require one.
Right, we can't require any more than one, so, but we can require at the minimum one. Right, so we're gonna tell the people at the minimum, one additional parking space shall be required.
No, because they can't, we can't require more than that. That can't be a minimum. If we can only do one, right? Am I, what am I not?
No, no, the, they can, they can actually provide more than one if they want to. It's, the state is telling us, we can't tell the people. Coming in for a permit that they have to supply more than one parking space. We cannot require them to do that. They can. So they can actually come in and propose five parking spaces per dwelling unit. But we want to limit it to just one space. At a minimum, they must supply one space. We don't want any, any less than that.
I think that's what it says.
Yeah, it's confusing, though, with the negatives. I agree with you, Katrina.
Yeah. It's cut and paste the state law language, but yeah, it's, it's.
Language the state used to tell us to say, we don't want you requiring more than one additional parking space per unit.
Yes.
I, I think what you say there, I think this matches what you, you were suggesting. Adequate off-street parking shall be provided. For the accessory dwelling unit in the form of one or more parking spaces.
Right.
Will that get kicked back by the AG if it says one or more?
Yeah.
Because we can't require more.
Require more.
Okay.
You can't require, so we have to just limit them to at least one.
At least one. For the accessory dwelling unit in the form of. At least one additional parking space.
Right, and so we're at least getting one, and, but we're letting them know if they want to provide more, they can provide more. We just can't require it.
Yeah. Yeah, negatives in, in this kind of language, with all respect to whoever drafted it at the state level, is, it's, it's not great.
Yeah, I, they, they mess with my mind, they do.
Now you're back to high school algebra and what you do with the greater than sign when you multiply both sides by negative one. It's confusing as hell.
What if we put notwithstanding the foregoing in front of it?
Yeah, there you go. That's, that's. Was that, was that the second semester of law school?
I'm gonna say, that's a big law school, that's a whole.
That's the catch-all.
Okay, the, the second change is, um. Okay, they call it the principal single family dwelling, and I'm suggesting we call it a dwelling unit, which is how we have it in our definitions. We don't have single family dwelling in our definitions. Um, and so the principal dwelling unit, this should say, instead of principal, single family dwelling.
Oh, yeah.
Right, I mean, at this point, I, I just say, don't bother changing anything, because the reason I put principal, single family dwelling was to. Mirror their language.
Yeah.
And until we really have. What they want. Um, I, I'm, I don't know if we're. You, you know, I mean, it doesn't hurt to change it, but at the same time, I'm just wondering if changing it at this point without them.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I mean.
What you're advocating for here, Sam, is, is the Brian Murphy principle.
Just wait.
There you go.
Wait.
So Katrina, I, I like what you've come up with, and I think they're, they're, they're good suggestions, but maybe. Just make a note of it, throw a sticky on it or something, and. Let's make sure we address these things once we get the state language in.
Yeah, I agree with what, because Katrina ran most of this, or I think all of it by me, and I agree with it. But at this point, until we have terms defined by the state. I, I, I just kind of have the. I think me and Katrina behind the scenes can figure out what we want to do, bring it back to the board, and then.
Yeah. Because we, it is dangerous to, to have our own terms and definitions, and then. Then.
Well, and that's kind of what I'm concerned with.
Lines up with the state and what doesn't, and, yeah.
You know, we currently have a definition of gross floor area. I'm almost certain it's not gonna jive with what the state says, so we're gonna have something in there relating to. Gross floor area as it pertains to accessory dwelling units, because like, uh, Groveland and West Newbury have. Uh, just completely different gross floor area definitions, and then talking to other inspectors. Same thing with a bunch of the definitions, so I think we may end up with very ADU-specific terms. So that we, we stay in line with, uh, the, uh, MGL and the CMRs to, uh.
Sure.
I, I, I mean, it, it's so frustrating to be thrown this huge. Change in the law and then saying, okay, sit on your hands and wait for us to figure out what we mean. Uh, uh, just, I, I, you know, I think this should have been done prior to.
Sure.
Putting the law into effect and saying, hey, here's your law.
Is, I can't define pornography, but I know it when I say it.
You've got it.
All right, is everybody okay with where we stand on the ADU?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much, Sam.
Hey, no problem. Thank you for the reminder. I, I, I did have it in my, my. Uh, for some reason, I didn't think I set my alarm or set the reminder on the calendar. And it hadn't quite come up yet, so when you, you said, oh, you know, are you still coming tonight? I was thinking it was seven o'clock and. I was missing it, and I'm like, why didn't my alarm go off? Um, yeah, uh, you know, I, it's, I need all the reminders I can get, so.
Very good, thank you for showing.
Good night, everyone.
You too.
Good night, Sam.
All right, next item on the agenda is to reduce, review the housing production plan.
All right, would you like me to call it up?
Um. I think, why don't, why, I've got it, so why don't I just?
Okay.
See if we got it here.
I'm just gonna practice alongside you on the side so that I.
There you go. All right, can I? All right. Cause everybody see it and is it large enough?
Yeah, so far, okay, yeah.
Better?
Yep.
All right. So, uh, thirty-two pages. Five chapters. I haven't read this in detail, looking for punctuation problems and anything like that.
So I will say that this is the version that isn't, um, doesn't have all the graphics added. Um, it, it does have some graphics, the maps, but, um, you know, they put a, a cover page on it, et cetera, which I received today. Um, but this is the, the text.
So, uh. How do we wanna go through this, folks? Whoa, Anne, your, uh, your mic is, uh.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Um, I, I understand that you and Brian met to talk about strategies for this.
No, this, no, that was on M B T A.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm sorry. Yes, of course. Never mind.
So, so how do you wanna go through this? We wanna go through page by page or? What'd you say, Brian?
Um, well, there's only a couple of notes in here that got changed.
Yeah, there are a couple of things that we had commented on, and let's just see what.
We can just skip to those. Um, I think we looked at the rest of it.
I'm just gonna make sure that I did give you. The latest copy because I did just receive another copy today.
Yeah, that was one of them, removing soldiers and sailors. So that's good.
Yeah, they deleted that, yes.
Although this draft is, oh yeah, this is pretty up to date, eleven twelve.
Eleven twelve.
Yeah. Okay.
That, that, this.
That still seems weird to me.
It, it drives me crazy, you know? To, to have that kinda, but then I get ticked off at all kinds of accounting stuff.
But that is revised.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's just silly.
Yes.
Twenty fifty, you're trying to predict population down to the person?
Right.
Yeah.
No, it's, uh.
It, it would have been okay to say about forty-six hundred here.
Forty-seven hundred, right? Well, telling the future is a shaky proposition as we all know.
Yeah. Oh, my God.
You know, I did just see, um, a statistic that there are about as much baby boomers in Massachusetts as there are millennials. And there, there should be more millennials, right?
Well, that. That ratio is gonna change.
Yeah.
Yes, we're, we're taking care of that day by day.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
Yeah. We'll be. Pretty soon.
Yeah, we hadn't made too many comments.
I think the next comments are on page twenty-two.
They just made graphs out of all these statistics. I don't know how, how I can really comment if they're accurate. Yeah, I sort of had an objection to this because, but maybe high risk is a term of art. When. The percentage of. Acres, let's see. Oh, I see one-fifth, okay. Oh. Is that correct? Just seems wild to me.
Seems pretty high to me.
Yes, to me too. Where do we learn the total number of acres in town? You can do the math, I guess.
Well, our fifth, uh, there's, there's a lot of houses that are along the river and probably every one of them counts.
But a fifth of the total land area?
I mean, when, when you think of the.
We've got a lot of, we got a lot of low-lying swamp areas.
I guess it's along all the little tributaries and I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the reservoirs are controlled. They're not gonna flood. Anyway. Presumably they've got their numbers right.
We had one rainstorm here not too long ago where. A considerable portion of my front yard flooded. How, you know, and I'm up at the top, you know, I'm up here a long hill. It's all downhill from here.
That's a covert size problem, right?
Yes. Yeah, it is.
You had an elevational problem.
But if, uh. If a, if a home floods out because of inadequate culverts, that's still a flood.
Right.
I'm not worried about my house. I'm just saying.
Yeah, it's a different paragraph, but yeah. Okay, anything else?
Yep, there's a change on twenty-three.
Yeah.
Oh. Yes, that's good.
Yep.
And we pointed that out to them.
I think that's it for the changes.
Yeah, I mean.
Good.
I'm, I mean. Oh, except. It meets the, our. Requirement to submit the, get the plan submitted and whatnot, and it'll go on the shelf for another five years.
Exactly.
Uh, but notice this addition here?
Yep. That's good.
Okay. And Dunfield deleted.
Oh, yeah, they took out the reference to the forty R.
Good. All right. So, uh, that's the document. Now also as part of the agenda item, it's next steps. So. We've got the housing production plan. What do we need to do next?
So the planning board can vote tonight. Um, to adopt the housing production plan. It also has to be, um, approved by the, the select board. Um, and then they send it off to the undersecretary of executive office and of housing and living. Livable community, communities.
Good. Well, then I, I move that the, uh, West Newbury Planning Board approved the housing production plan for twenty-twenty-four. As amended and discussed tonight.
Second.
You have a second from Mr. Cronin. Uh, any further discussion? Saying none. Ray Cook, I.
And Bertie and I.
And Cronin, I.
Deb Hamilton, I.
Brian Murphy, I.
And, and, and Ted nods.
Yeah, I, I have, I actually have a quick question. So, um, process-wise, once, you know, this goes through the select board to E O H L C. Um. Does this get shared or publicized with the community? How does this get shared with?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be put up on the planning board website, which I am working hard to revise the planning board website. Cause it's a mess of information right now, and I really want the M B T A information to be much clearer for the public. Um, but we're going to set aside a webpage just for all the, um, plans such as this.
So, okay, absolutely. Nice. Yeah, that was gonna be my second question is, uh, thoughts on, and this might be what you're thinking already is, um. Providing this to folks prior to the M B T A conversation, cause it obviously, uh, is pertinent information that they understand the statistics and. You know, the, the past and the future of what's going on in our town.
You know, that's, that's a very good point, Ted. And in fact, uh, the next time we have a public meeting for the M B T A, it'd be good to have this. Sitting. Ready to, to, uh, show some of those graphics. Depending on how the conversations go.
Yeah, there's some interesting data points in there that, that into the conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good point. Uh, very good.
Ray, if I may, um. I mean, may, maybe we should wait and see if the select board approves it, but I do think that, um, we should authorize the town planner. To send a note of thanks. To M V P C. Uh, for their diligent efforts in, uh, completing this plan for us.
You're here.
At no cost to us.
No, no, it's, it's, that's, yeah. You imagine, you imagine how much harder this would be without, without them.
Goodness, we've done it.
I will send a real card in the mail, too.
Great.
Wow.
Whatever works, that, you know, that, that'd be very nice. Thank you, Katrina.
Go on, old school and classy on us.
Yeah.
Serious.
Um, do they get paid at all? Or is this part of what they do for the communities?
Oh, we pay.
This is part of a state grant.
Yeah.
So, M V P C has been compensated.
We'll give them a thank you too, though.
Thank you.
Yeah, or the Affordable Housing Trust paid about five thousand dollars as the town's contribution towards this. Each town was asked to contribute. So, just wanna make.
They helped, they helped every community in the valley with the housing protection plan?
No, the West Newbury Affordable Housing Trust contributed West Newbury's share of the, uh, the cost.
Oh, okay. My, I, I stand corrected. Thank you.
No, just offering that information.
No, no, yep.
Very good. All right. Uh, next item on the agenda is the proposed M B T A Communities Multi-Family Overlay District. Where we're gonna discuss the next steps. And Wendy, I noticed that you're here. Uh, Wendy and Brian and Angus and who else was there?
Me.
Yes. Uh, we were, we talked about, uh, uh, where we stand in the, in the, in the McMod and what our next steps were. And we talked about the, um, traffic studies. And, uh, that, uh. All three of you, feel free to come in and, and correct me if I go off here. But we all, I, it was the general feeling at our, our meeting that, um. Traffic probably, there probably wouldn't be a huge impact. On traffic at either location. Um, but that it was necessary. To reassure the public. That, uh, traffic study be done. Um, so there was discussion about that. We were discussing the. Two potential sites. And trying to get a feel for how we would go forward. Um, to the town regarding those sites. And, um, there were options. One would be to go to the town and saying, look, these are. These are both potential sites here. And then figure out a way to get input from the broader community. On which site would be better. Um, or. We could, uh, come up. With what we think. Would be the better of the two sites and present that to the town in the spring. Um, and this would be something where we would have a joint meeting between the planning board and the select board. To have that discussion and go through the pros and cons of the two. Um. And as part of that meeting. Uh, we came away with sort of these assignments and to discuss. So my assignment is with the planning board to discuss. What you think of those ideas. Coming forward to the town, trying to get their input on which of the two sites they'd want. The pros and cons being here, uh, that. Um. It's less. It politically, it doesn't look like we're. Trying to impose our will on the residents of West Newbury and allowing them to provide more input going forward. The, the other point of view is we were elected by the town. To figure this stuff out, to get ourselves up to speed, become the, sort of the experts on this, to consider things that. Um, the average resident might not be aware of and then propose. One of the two sites, or another option is to propose both. In the interest of being fair, even though that would be more than absolutely necessary. So I guess what I wanna do right now is encourage discussion. Of those two approaches. So Anne, Tim, Ted, Deb. Brian again, Katrina again. And Wendy.
Ray, could I just ask, um, what, what's the timing on those two studies? You know, the impact studies, the traffic and the financial one?
Um, those are ongoing. The traffic study has to be, uh, put out for proposal and, and, uh, and then conducted. Um, and Katrina, you were working on trying to come up with a scope of work that wasn't excessive.
Right. And so I, I do have, uh, an email from, uh, Dave Kelly, your, your consultant or your peer review engineer. I just asked them, I said, do you think you could review this and maybe pare it down to something that is more appropriate for. Our needs. And he said, sure, I'll ask around. And so I'm giving him until tomorrow and I was gonna touch back with him. Uh, it's very nice of them to do it for free. Um.
And, and that's just figuring out how, what, what the scope of work for the traffic study should be, not whether or not there should be one.
Right. So realistically, it wouldn't be done before the end of February, say.
Oh, okay.
Um.
The reason I asked is.
Analysis stands to be completed sooner than that. Um, we're putting together a, um, meeting. With the, um, person who did the fiscal impact analysis for early December. And I think they have everything just about sewed up and we're, they're probably gonna be presenting what they have at that time.
Okay. I, I just think from a process standpoint, uh, if we are gonna engage the public, it would be good to have that in hand, you know, whatever. We have. So it sounds like, realistically, it will be the, the fiscal impact one, which is probably the more significant one anyway.
Yeah, and we do have some information regarding traffic. Because we have similar kinda. Traffic impact studies from other developments of similar size.
Sure.
Um, and there's been so much more recent study done because of the corridor stuff and the inner, and the.
I'm good.
Figuring out the crosswork up, the crosswalk up at Page School and whatnot. I mean, we, we've got good traffic counts along Main. Main Street, so.
Yeah. You know, I, I, I will say that listening to the conversation last week, um. And trying to help them decide which one to choose, you know, I said, well, wait, we, we just need to come up with criteria, but. All the criteria we came up with, it sounded like they kinda balanced each other out, or one was heavy on one and one was heavy on the other. But I think it sounds to me, at least what it's gonna come down to is what kind of impact on traffic. Each, each of the sites has. Um, I don't know. You can tell me I'm, I'm wrong. Does that sound right?
Well, I, I think that was, that was a major one. Um, another thing, uh, that I think was significant was, you know, how it affects the viewscape. Um, you know, what sort of impact it has on the character of the town. Um. And another really critical one, I, it might have been, I think it was Wendy. Who mentioned this and it was like, oh, yeah. Um, and that's actually which one would be more likely to be developed. Because there is a discussion that the nap property actually would have a higher chance of act, being developed. And therefore be less desirable for the zoning district because people in the town. Don't want something developed anytime soon. So there are all these political implications, but stepping back from that, the discussion of which one. Just how do you feel about? Whether we should be presenting one as the preferred site or whether we should approach the town saying. We've done our research. These are two good sites. Now we need input from you as to which site we go forward with.
But when you say input, are you talking about some kind of a vote? I mean, I think it has, that has the potential. Neither one is ideal, but I think that voting on the two has the potential to really be a very bizarre divisive. You know, neighbor against neighbor sort of pitchfork situation. I don't know.
Well, you know, I mean, no matter what happens here. You know, one, it's, it's likely to be divisive. One, one neighborhood is gonna feel put upon no matter.
Yeah, I know.
How it goes. And I guess the question is. Which, in which direction are they throwing the pitchforks? Uh.
It's true.
Um, I, I could, I, I could weigh in a little bit here. Uh, 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 Dunn realistically is not a good site on which to build. You've got that steep, steep hill, water management is an issue. I, I went to the corridor meeting last Thursday night and somebody raised the issue about water runoff, um, coming off that property. I, I think the NAP property, it, it's pretty inevitable that it is for sale and Mr. Sarkis apparently, you know, has some interest in it. It's going to be developed. It seems like a no brainer that that should be the site that we should be promoting. Um, and it's big enough and has few enough of butters that perhaps we can overcome any objections to putting in a multifamily zone there.
Is that a, is that a broadly in previous meetings? I don't know if this was covered, that the developable nature of one site versus the other? I mean, is that common knowledge? Has that been talked about? Or is that just more between us that we know that information?
It's been talked about.
Yeah, quite a bit.
Yeah, my opinion is if, I mean. Go ahead.
The NAP site will be developed in one form or another. And the, the owners have made it fairly clear that, you know, that 10 years ago, they were interested, they gave us a plan for three lots on it. And then they decided to hang on and, and with their, uh, nursery business. They're older folks and, uh, something is going to get developed there. Whether it's three lots or I think you could probably do four or five very easily there for, in, in a subdivision. Whether they would want to do a special permit and do, do a cottage development or something, that I don't know. But that parcel is going to have houses on it in one form or another.
And, and our putting, uh, multifamily zoning as a possibility there doesn't obligate anybody to build that. They could still build single family houses there.
All, all, okay, so, so all this is, all these are valid points and they're germane. But again, I come back to the, the, the first question. Is this something where we as the elected representatives of the town, in concert with the select board, we come forward to the town saying, after much discussion, we think this is the better site? Or do we come to the town saying, these are both good sites and we leave it up to you to decide? For example, and I think this, you know, I think some, I think maybe Angus said this would be disastrous. I don't know. But I had a wacky idea that, you know, you could actually have two items uh, at town meeting. One for one property, one for the other, and then at that boat is when the, the town decides which one to go forward with.
Well, I think we've taken a lot of public input on this.
Yep.
And as tough as it is, I sort of feel like it's the elected official's job to present something.
And I think that was Wendy's feeling, but I don't want to speak for her, but she's, she's.
That was my feeling. It's, it's our job to do that.
Yeah.
I would agree on that.
Uh, Ted, Tim?
Yeah, yeah. Going back to, I mean, the question I was asking before was, you know, my line of thinking on that was if we give, we put it out and, and ask for, uh, feedback on which one the community would prefer to go with. I think given the sentiment that I've gathered so far in town, they're going, going to choose the lot that is less buildable. I mean, that, that's my opinion. So, uh, I am of the camp of, you know, you all or you all with the voting power should, should decide on that. Uh, we should, we should come with a proposal. And, and my, my, the, the, the second kind of opinion I have is, what's the downside of presenting both? Ray, you, you brought that up as an option. Presenting both.
Well, there's pros and cons to it, I think, um. One is, uh, is, so the downside to presenting both is that it could pit neighbor against neighbor.
Both.
No, 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 proposing the, the, the zoning change for both, both.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so. So the, the pros of that are that you're being fair. But the con, which I think is going to be huge, yeah, uh, politically is that people don't want this to begin with. So the sense from the town, even if philosophically, like, I mean, philosophically, I think we need more housing and we need more housing to be affordable overall in the state and the country. But, but philosophically won't cut it, I think, uh, politically in the town. I think people want to do the minimum necessary to comply with the law. And, and so proposing both sites would mean that you theoretically, you could end up with two such developments and, and we'd be offering more than is required by the state.
Yeah, I think it was the June of 2023 public meeting at the annex where people literally said, well, that means we could end up with 87 times two units.
Yeah.
It were completely flipped out, even though.
And at those previous meetings, I forget Ted, were you there?
I was not, no.
Yeah. Yeah, no matter how much, uh, we tried to objectively posit that economically, nobody's going to build out the full 87 units because of the septic requirements. It's just the, you wouldn't be able to make any money on the project. But that was not reassured. There was a contingent of, of the public that did not find our, our, uh, educated opinion to be persuasive. They were, they were really worried that somebody could. The fact that somebody could meant that somebody might. And you know, if you're speaking logically, you're like, well, I mean, yeah, it would remain a possibility to build out the full 87. I mean.
No, it doesn't, but you run to septic, it, it.
Yeah.
But people.
That, that, that's what we all discussed.
Yeah.
I mean, even, and I don't even know the, even if you, if you said money be damned, I don't care how much money I lose, I'm going to do 87 units. I'm not sure you could still physically do it just because space requirements and all kinds of pumping requirements and stuff. But anyway, so that's the bottom line, Ted, I, I think is that if, if we came forward proposing it for both, it would get voted down for sure because we'd be doing more than the absolute minimum.
Yep.
People don't want to.
Has the state telegraphed, for instance, if we do, say we, we selected NAP and it passed, but then a different kind of development were built on that land? Has the state made any noise about, you know, if your, if your compliant zone gets taken up with something else, are they going to make you do another one?
That, that was, that was, uh, that was determined, um, by, uh, Dylan Sussman.
Oh, it was.
Who had a conversation and, you know, at, at the time, and I don't know if it was in writing, um, he said, no, you, 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 you created a zone and the developer chose to do something different. But you created the zone.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you complied.
And that, and that started, if you remember, that started that conversation thread about, well, then we should apply the zoning to someplace that's already completely built up.
Oh, right, right, right. Which is ridiculous. Yeah.
Right.
Well, I mean, some people don't view it as ridiculous. What's that?
A lot of communities have done that, such as, although they, they didn't even vote to adopt it and it was going to be approved by the state and it was on a built out area.
Wild.
Yeah, I can't, I can't imagine that you could do that though and not be laying yourself open for some sort of legal action from the state.
Well, there's a lot of communities such as Beverly that have been providing their fair share of housing. And so they're, they're able to just put that zone on top of the housing that they've already allowed in their, in their cities, uh, which is fun.
Well, I suppose somebody could come in and demolish all the housing and then rebuild according to the new density.
Yeah, oh, yeah. That, that, that's exactly the idea in some of these uh, more, more dense urban areas where you have a, you know, a commercial storefront and apartment or two above, uh, for a block. You get rid of the block.
Yeah.
I mean, all right, the economics, yeah.
So I don't think we have to make a formal vote here. I think the consensus is that we feel as that, that we were sort of hired to do, we should make a recommendation to the town.
Yeah, as long as we've gotten, you know, the input and I can said, we've gotten a lot of input. Um, just to follow up on what Katrina said earlier, you know, I think we just want to make sure there's enough information, like for example, on the website, you know, that shows like, you know, what, what we've looked into and, you know, what's, what's been considered just so, because it's been a while, right? You know, since we revisited.
And, and we, we want people to come into the next public meeting with that background information.
Yep.
Having been available for a decent amount of time before the meeting, so that people who want to can actually read up on it. Now, the next step then, I suggest, and I'm glad Wendy came on tonight. Um, as we discussed at our meeting, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, Wendy, correct, well, anybody correct me if I'm wrong, would be to arrange some sort of meeting where we get together with the select board and we discuss the two sites where Deb can present her point of view on NAP, for example, and, you know, we, well, where we come to our conclusion. I think there are some things that do favor the other site. But we can leave those discussions for when everybody's together. And I think, I think we'd benefit because we get Wendy's perspective and the other select board members' perspective on things and vice versa.
Yeah, I, I mean, just to add on to that, Ray, I, I, I think I heard from Wendy that there was a desire to have a a joint vote and, and you know, ideally you'd, you'd like to have everybody in unanimity.
Yep.
Marching along. I don't know if we're, after the one meeting, we'd, we'd be able to do that. We might have to hear each other out and then think about certain aspects.
Well, that's fine. We gotta get started.
I, I'd like to hear Wendy's comment on, on, on that.
Go ahead, Wendy.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fair. What if we had a joint meeting to discuss it and then we each went back to our respective boards and voted? I mean, I don't know, because then we also want to have the public hearing as a joint meeting.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we're looking at three joint meetings then, which we all, we each have our own business to do that, that could become a bit unwieldy, you know, other than this. So I don't know if that sounds reasonable to discuss it together and then take a vote at our own meetings and then.
Well, I, I, what I suggest we do is we have the joint meeting restricted to this topic um, with the idea that we might come to a consensus.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And, and, uh, and, uh, and take a vote at that point in time, or we might decide to take it back and have individual board votes.
Sounds good.
You never know.
Yeah, I have a comment to go back to these studies. Presumably the fiscal impact will be identical for both sites because it's a function of the number of units. The traffic might not be, we're all pretty persuaded that it's de minimis, but there may be nuances there. It might be nice to know that before this vote so that we aren't presenting a site where then folks could stand up and say, but this one clearly has a worse traffic impact or a better, you know what I mean? So, is to, I know that, uh, Brian, maybe you can answer. Certainly MVPC has a robust uh, highway department. Do they ever do traffic studies?
Yeah, we, we inquired, they, they cannot provide the service that we're looking for here. They can provide some traffic count info and whatnot.
Yeah.
Uh, but they cannot meet these needs.
I mean, we've seen them over the years. There are very specific firms that do this in the state of Massachusetts, right? And we've seen them, big ones from some like VHB type people, but we've seen other ones too. It's a little niche market. Just wonder if we can.
Well, I think that's what we, we asked Katrina to, uh,
Yeah, yeah.
talk, talk to, uh,
I had a list of seven.
Yeah, the proposal that was given was frankly, I think a, a little bit. There was a lot there.
Right.
And Angus was concerned it was going to be quite expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so we thought it best to try to get a pair down. But I think your point's well taken, that, you know, we're not going to have, we're not going to have that till late in the game.
But we already do know a couple of things and that's that, um, most of the traffic is going to head towards 95 and Newbury Port in the morning and come back along Main Street in the afternoon. And we do know the relative traffic counts there. So, um, as a small percentage increase in the amount of traffic, if you're starting out closer to 95, when it comes to vehicles per mile,
Right.
it, a little less from the Dunn than from the NAP. I think it's, I think it's a small thing.
Right.
There'd be a few more cars going past the post office if it's in the NAP than if it's in the Dunn.
Right. In reality, we won't have the results of that traffic impact analysis until mid-February at the earliest.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about, well, I don't know.
And there are also arguments to be, to be made about, you know, when considering this stuff where I think that the two boards, with our experience, we can reasonably talk about things like, uh, where would you put a crosswalk, right? So there's pedestrian considerations there and then sightlines from the two places. Probably the sightlines are better at NAP than they are at Dunn, but.
Right. And there's some sort of intersection complexities, I think, with Church Street being somewhere.
Yep.
Yep, there are. Of course, it, you know, there's, there's some intersection anomalies at the other places as well.
Quite to the same extent because of the curve there and
And also the volume of traffic.
The accident numbers for that intersection are surprisingly high.
And if there are any problems, the, the traffic consultant will offer mitigation so that we can, we can, um, help with those problems. So any, any person that develops the property will have to do something to make it, make it safe.
Right, right. There might end up being a signalization requirement or whatever. So, anyway.
Well, these, these are some of the things that we should discuss when we get together. Wendy, do you have an idea when it would be good for the select board? I mean, you guys are pretty much sitting on your hands all the time anyway, right?
Yeah, um, are, are we looking at January or, uh, in December, maybe?
Oh, December, hopefully, because, um, well, I, it would just be nice to, to know which way we're going by January because we're going to have to advertise um, one or the other, what, mid-January? Where do you, you advertise in the Daily News, right?
Yeah, the, the legal ad, you mean?
All, all we're advertising is a public hearing on this. We don't need to be specific.
No, doesn't matter what, what the site is.
Uh, I, I, I do want to add, um, that part of the discussion was, um, in, in terms of just using Dodson and Flinker.
Oh, yes, thank you.
There was a desire to, uh, engage MVPC on, um, some other presentation matters. Uh, I, I think there was a feeling, uh, you know, from, from Angus and, and I believe Wendy, and, and she can elaborate on that, um, that some of the answers that Dodson and Flinker provided in the two public hearings we had, were, were perhaps not as, uh, detailed or robust as they may have been. And to, to that end, we have written to MVPC to see about their availability to help out um, on this, and we're still awaiting a, a firm response. It should be this week, we, we'll hear. They are juggling a couple of other communities in this spring timeframe as well. But, uh, and I think it's a good idea. Um, they, they did a nice job in Newbury.
That's what I was going to say.
To, to bring a positive vote. However, they, the, the town of Raleigh also turned them down.
They, uh, they, they put together a nice information packet for Newbury and correct me if I'm wrong here, Brian, but you're sort of asking if they could kind of tweak that for us?
Yes, it, it's not to, it's not to redo the bylaw. We, we would.
No.
We, we have the bylaw and, and we, I think we like the general idea of it and whatnot. Uh, but it's really some of the public facing commentary.
By the way, Raleigh is voting again next Monday. By the way, Raleigh is voting again next Monday.
Oh, good. Oh, that'll be great to see how that turns out.
The Newbury sites, I'll have to say, were much, I would say, less controversial. They were more, you know, in commercial, non-hybridous, so.
So Wendy, calendar. What, uh, in deference to the, uh, to you guys and your workload, uh, what, when, when can we get together?
How about the week in between your December meetings? The week of?
So that would be the week of the ninth?
Yeah, because that's our off meeting week as well. So, um, we could do it on that Tuesday or.
What works for you? When are you guys used to meeting?
We usually meet on Thursdays, but we don't meet that week, so.
You're talking about, is that the, what day of the week is that?
So Tuesday would be the tenth and Thursday would be the twelfth of December.
I think the tenth would work. I mean, I would have to check with Angus, of course, but, um, would you want to tentatively say that and then?
Yeah, let's do that. Tentatively say for the tenth at seven o'clock.
Okay.
And, uh, and how do you feel about a Zoom meeting versus in person?
I would prefer in person if, if you could handle it. I mean, we don't have any plans to review really, um.
Yeah, yeah. Are the rest of the planning board members okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, so, uh, let's tentatively schedule it for Tuesday, the tenth at seven o'clock, uh, in the nineteen-ten building.
Hey.
Great, and I'll confirm tomorrow. Ray, should I get back to you or Katrina?
Back to Katrina is great.
All right.
Sorry, Ray, you, did you say the nineteen-ten building?
Yeah, it's technically, it's not the town hall.
It's the office building.
Some of the old timers get upset if you refer to the nineteen-ten building as the town hall, because.
Okay.
And some people get upset if you say the Old Town Hall because it's not the Old Town Hall, it is the town hall. It's sort of like asking me about the difference between cement and concrete.
Yeah, we're not going there tonight.
But by saying the nineteen-ten building, I think is safe.
But you, it is the town hall. Okay.
No, it's the nineteen-ten.
The nineteen-ten building is the town office building.
No, I don't even know the address of where I work.
Well, it's where, yeah. Nineteen-ten building is, is, is where your office is, yeah.
But what is the address? Three something?
It's three eighty-one Main Street.
Thank you. All right.
Well, thank you.
Wendy, I, I'll, I'll shoot another note to Gerard and just see where things are. I, I, you know, make sure we hear this week.
Yeah.
Wendy, I always appreciate your presence at these meetings, so thank you for that. I don't know.
My pleasure.
Hang around as we talk about the Artichoke Reservoir.
Oh, yes, she might want to, actually.
I do, actually.
Kind of a water lady.
All right, well, uh, so the next item, uh,
Hey Ray, I, I hate to do this, but, um, there were some edits, um, that were in this document, you know, this, uh, MBTA document that, those came from the state, did they?
No.
No.
They were, they were done by Dodson and Flinker, um, after the state, um, suggested some changes and that was in April.
Okay.
After April.
I think we've looked at those.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Some of them were kind of substantive. I was a little surprised, you know, about like the number of units in the building and things like that.
Well, that's something that I think we can easily take up in January.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I was, I was surprised because I didn't see like a basis for some of these changes in the guidelines. So they, they must have had like some conversation, as you say, with somebody in that office and then made these updates, which, you know.
Tim, I can send you the letter from EO HLC?
Okay, send that to all of us, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep, sounds good.
Very good. Okay, review, uh, the Lower Artichoke Reservoir watershed based plan. And the select board wants comments from us. Do the select board by December second. And Brad just muted his mic, so that's good. Now, this is something I don't have offhand up to share.
Right.
An enormous one.
So they're having a meeting about this at six thirty PM in the Newburyport Senior Center. Um, oh, I didn't put the date. Next week sometime?
Oh, no, I've got it.
December second, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, do you want to, do you want to share it, Ray? Because I, I like how you walk through it with, with everyone. You know the right speed to go.
Oh.
I, I think I would go through it quicker.
I'm glad to help. Let's see here.
Certain portions of it are highly relevant and other portions a little less so.
All right, I assume you guys can see this? And I assume it's large enough? How come nobody's saying yes?
Yeah, the title page looks good.
Yeah, I think when we see the text, we may need to be out in large, but let's take a peek.
Anybody want to comment on the title page? Sorry.
Like the colors.
There you go.
Yeah, too small.
I will try to make it bigger. I don't know how successful I will be.
Oh, it's good.
Yep, that's fine for me.
Okay. And Wendy, please chime in.
Okay.
Do you want to, actually Wendy, do you want to, uh, kind of like frame this? You guys need comments by second of December?
Yeah, they're, they're due back to MVPC on the fifth, I believe. Um, yeah, so this came out, this isn't anything we've been involved with. Um, we're not required to approve it, but it was given to us and we were given the opportunity to comment on it. So it's kind of an odd situation.
Okay, can I just make a, a, a statement in general? I mean,
Please.
Anything to do with the water just gets my blood boiling a little bit.
Me, I was just about to say that. Yeah. Go right ahead, Newburyport. Tell us about it.
So that, that kind of frames how I view this whole thing to begin with.
I'm with you, Brian. I feel the same way, especially getting it at the last minute and being.
Something we could get a unanimous vote on, Wendy?
Yes, I think we all do. I mean, in general, you know, they lay out these zones which are stricter than the zone A's that we had been led to believe because they've got every tiny little tributary now, you know, every piece of land in the eastern two-thirds of town is now in the zone A. Um, and then they make these sort of sweeping comments about, farming activity and horses and manure handling and, uh, and then they refer to their.
This map that you're stuck on right here doesn't even show the Indian Hill Reservoir. This is an ancient map.
Yeah, which is hilarious.
Right?
Yes, right there.
Yeah, and, and one of, one of the pollutants they're worried about, the highest source of it is forest land. I forget which one.
Sixty-five percent forested. That's ridiculous.
I, I remember, I, I came across and I was like, well, those seems high. And then I, I dug it in and in this report, it says that most of it loading is coming from forest land.
Well, there are a few things that are just seeing like, one of the, they, they're maintaining that Maple Crest Farm, John Owles Farm is one of the big polluters. I don't know. Neither here nor there. A lot of it has to do with roads going around the edge of the reservoir, but, um, that's sort of another matter. And the big neighborhood in Newburyport on that easterly side.
Right.
Is, is of huge concern and that was all developed before any of these regulations were in place. So it sort of seems to me that maybe Newburyport needs to get their neighborhood figured out before they start, you know, pestering us.
Wendy, can you put that in your response?
No, sure.
You send it to me, I'll include it with our.
Yeah, right.
There you go. On behalf of the planning board.
Well, they, no, they.
Anne says, Newburyport ought to get their.
Get your neighborhood straightened out. Um, the other thing is they, they refer in the executive summary at the end, which is actually a pretty piffy section, um, about these, the raw water, you know, the emergency line that they want to install. And very breezily refer to it. You have to dig pretty hard into the city of Newburyport website to find the map, which I did find. And it's the preferred route is the one that goes up Cherry Hill, up, uh, Bolton to Cherry Hill, down Indian Hill, and then all the way down Garden Street and then over Middle and then down along the west side where the trail is there and that protected land to the, um, to the treatment plant. And they, they, uh, allow us how that one's great because it wouldn't require any, uh, permission for crossing private land. It's all in streets. So I guess my message to the select board might be that if they want to tear up all our streets for months and years to get that organized, then we, we would need some kind of serious discussion about water rates as compensation.
Yep.
And I say that as someone who's not on the water system, but that's a big ask.
Yeah.
So that's my.
You know, I mean, just, just look at this map right here. Just look at the number of dots.
Well, that's the, that's where the problem, the, the append, the, there's an appendix that talks about all the pollution from that neighborhood. So, you know, it's, it's interesting, but I don't really know what they want us to do.
Mm hmm.
Well, I, I, I think the question I had in general is what liability will a town of West Newbury have if this is just accepted and is then they're going to be, you know, is, is this tacit acceptance of whatever comes down the road? You know, from, from Newburyport Water Commission?
This is, this is what I was also as feedback. This was the thing that I was kind of focused on. It surprised me and then I dug into it more. You took, take a look at total phosphorus, right? And that you normally that's like excessive fertilizer use and whatnot.
Right.
Right? And you got agriculture, a hundred and seventy-five. Look, the forest land dominates, right? And, and what, I mean.
What are you gonna do? Yeah.
What are you gonna do? Right? Maybe if we swept our forests, we wouldn't have, uh.
And also these, these are, that's raw number. What, what is that? So what's the context for that? Is that a good thing? A bad thing? It's just a raw number, right?
It's just the amount of.
I mean, you're getting decayed leaves in the rainwater that runs off into the reservoir. And so there's your total suspended solids and, and, I mean.
Then what?
I mean, are you, I, I guess what I'm saying is is this a solution in search of a problem? And if there is a problem, isn't the problem in Newburyport itself?
Or is this just, is this a document they were required to do as some kind of compliance for the state for their water quality? I don't know what the origin of it is.
Yes, it's a requirement. It was last done five years ago. They have to do it every five years, update it. It's, you know, they say it's non-binding on West Newbury, but I'm, I'm concerned about how, how it looks if we offer comments and seem to agree with this, you know, that kind of undermines our negotiating power in the future. I'm afraid.
Well, I guess you could, I, I, you know, forgive me if I'm paraphrasing here, but as far as feedback from the planning board, we're con, we're concerned about any large public works effort that might come as a result of this plan.
Yeah.
Specifically rooting pipelines.
But we're also concerned about, you know, they're gonna, are they going to be asking us to pass all kinds of, you know, surface water bylaws that are basically a constraint on landowners' use of their land?
Yes, and, and just for the record, we note that West Newbury's largest contribution to what's listed as concerns is from natural forest land. And, and, and that, uh, as far as overall human caused pollution, we see the biggest problem being Newburyport itself, this neighborhood.
Wendy, I wonder, you know, the town of Newbury is partly included in this too. Do, do you know whether they intend to offer comments?
I don't know. I mean, this is all pretty last minute, so I'm not sure if they've been in the loop or not. It does.
Maybe what this is mostly useful for is because it gets us talking about these things, but maybe there's a, let's just go, take the extreme. Is there something to be said for both our select board and theirs saying, uh, we decline, we decline to make any comments on this report, which was received within a very short time of your deadline and, um, we understand that you're preparing this report to be in compliance with the state law and just not comment.
Mm hmm. I think that's a fair approach.
I mean, it's an approach that doesn't make, take a stand anywhere that can cause you trouble.
Well, speaking only for myself, I, I, I would trust the select board here.
Yeah.
To put together an appropriate response and, uh, you know, I don't, I don't think you, I, I don't know what you want from us other than that we trust you with this.
Well, we were looking for written feedback. Um, I guess we could take that from the minutes, but, uh, I mean, if, if, if it's an option, maybe we'll say we declined to comment if that's what you, the planning board would support. Um, I mean, I can convey that.
Well, I mean, we haven't, we're not water experts.
Mm hmm.
They're doing this as a statutory requirement.
Yeah.
You know, is the water board looking at it? I mean, I don't really know to think about it.
Yeah, I mean, actually, it's a good point because a proper response from the town of West Newbury is more than the planning board. I mean, you'd want to get, you'd want to get input from the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, we, we sent this to all, to the Water Commissioners, Conservation, Planning Board, you know, open space, everybody that's.
And who's, who's representing the agricultural interests?
Um, nobody.
I guess, I guess just the select board, unfortunately, right? I mean, I don't know what the, you know, foreseeable impact would be on the remaining agricultural activities in West Newbury here, but it is a concern.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
And I also think for Essex County Greenbelt, it's pretty interesting. They own a lot of the land within this, uh, area.
That's right.
They've been trying to build, uh, alliances with farmers as well as for open space trail recreational use. And a number of the things mentioned in here, uh, agricultural and recreational use are being called out as things that are potentially damaging to the water. So I, I think that's a real slippery slope right there.
Yeah.
How does it, how does it dovetail with efforts to preserve? You know, to not build on land.
Yeah, you would think that, uh, you know, passive recreation on protected wildlands is the best thing possible.
Well, yeah.
Look, the, the Emery Lane property, that's just open space, right? I mean, there is some farming there, but that's one of the ones that was called out for, you know, for.
There, there are a few buildings there as part of the retreat.
But it's, it's called out, I think because of, maybe just because of the hanging activity. I don't know. I, it's, it's perplexing to me.
Yeah, why would that, why would that be called out at all? I mean, that's a benefit to have open space there for the aquifer.
Right.
Well, it is, it is, uh, being used agriculturally.
Yeah, in a very minimal way.
Right, they're, they're not doing a lot of fertilizer, the brothers.
Well, that's the thing. As I say, this is raw data. I have no idea how bad this is in
Right, right.
In world terms.
Well, all the Emery, Emery Lane stuff is outside of this. So if it's showing up as a problem in the report, that's a mistake in the report.
It's one of the addresses, Ray.
Yeah, well, they're making a mistake. That's a flaw in the report because as you see, if this black line is what you're concerned with, right, Emery Lane, all that's up here. That's on the other side of one thirteen. That's beyond the dam at the bottom of the.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
So, I mean, that's another feedback, Wendy, is that the report is in error because every lane lands are outside the watershed.
Well, the brothers do own the land that the, that our, our wells are on, you know.
Yeah, but they're not hanging that.
No. No.
It's forest or open, yeah.
There were trees on it.
Yeah.
Where is, where is, where do they call it, Emery Lane? Tim, do you?
Uh, that's on page twenty-three, Ray. These are the, the hotspot parcels. That scored the highest.
Look at that.
Maybe, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, well, it's got the Emery Lane addresses, yeah.
That's the other side of the street. That's the other side of the street.
You can call that out as an error in their report, Wendy.
Yeah.
Name with nine, what's nine sixty-three main? Is that the other side, the wa- the well field?
It, it does look, look like the perimeter goes on the north side of one thirteen in some areas.
Just a little bit right here and here, but.
Parcel, yeah. I don't know. I don't know.
Wait, hold that thought. What is it? Nine sixty-three Main Street? I think I got, I did, I have the mine, I might have had the mine map up here. Let me just.
I think, uh, that could be the little white house, the last house next to the well fields.
Any little parcel, why would that?
I don't know.
Doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
Lots don't make sense to me.
They, they.
Some of them flip some of them.
And then Parsons Woods is in here is, as well, but not, as you say, the subdivision that is much larger that's in Newburyport.
Yeah, yeah, but it's almost like the color coding is opposite, like the green should be red and the red should be green.
Okay, hold on here, let me share this.
Yeah, that's the well field parcel. So.
Well, that's, that's almost entirely untouched.
Yes.
Why is that a hotspot? I just don't get it.
Click, Ray, click the little, uh, the parcel next to that on, on Main Street. Now the other side. The little, the little tiny house lot, yeah.
This one?
Is that nine sixty-three?
No, nine sixty.
Nine sixty-one, so yeah.
Interesting, yeah.
Well, I don't know. I don't know what to say except that.
And, and, and you could say in our brief review, we found errors in the report.
And nothing that we need to change or fix in West Newbury.
Well, I don't think we wanna say that. I don't wanna, I don't wanna a, a, adopt a stance really like that. I just, I feel like this doesn't have much context.
Right, right.
I mean, the, the two, the two highest hotspots, well, that's twenty, yeah, the two highest hotspot scores. Well, the three, that, that, that we take issue with the three highest hotspot scores on page twenty-three.
Yeah.
Zero Emery Lane and twenty-one Emery Lane are not subs- are not in, within the watershed. I wouldn't even bother trying to say substantially within. And nine sixty-three Main Street is in large part.
Well field.
Un, undeveloped as it's the well field plan.
Woods, yeah.
Doesn't this just look opposite to you, the hotspots? It looks like the low numbers should be the hotspots. I just don't understand.
Do they define hotspots?
Yeah, it's on page, the competing pages, twenty-one and twenty-two. And then there's a scoring criteria, right? And, but the problem is that these are the ones that they're advocating best management practices on. You know, which.
They're all developed.
And, and yeah, and you know, I personally, yeah, I agree with you guys. Shouldn't you put your hotspots in red? And your not so hotspots in green?
Well, but, but I just don't understand why, so I just don't understand how they're using this term, I guess. Because big open space parcels have these high scores, which mean they're problem areas.
And I think the reason why they come up is because they just, they have.
Big.
Many acres.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then areas where there are roofs and roads and all kinds of crazy runoff is not, is good?
Yeah, tell them this report is full of it.
Anyway, it seems very confusing.
You want, want that gesture?
And even this one does not have the upper artichoke on it, does it? Oh, it's just that little blip there. Okay, it looks so tiny.
Yeah, I mean, why would you spend money developing best management practices on Emery Lane? Or the well field?
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, it just, just doesn't make any sense.
No.
We tell them that the report doesn't make sense, but.
I mean, I, Wendy, I, I think we just wanna be sure we're not committed to some.
Yeah.
You know, activity here or something, you know, that has a fiscal issue for, for the town.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I guess if we're not asked to approve of it, just to comment, we say that we've rece- we received this information duly noted and, you know.
We, we, we take issue with details of the report as presented.
Right.
Yeah, you can wordsmith that.
And then, and then for example, table C two refers to, uh, parcels that are not within the watershed boundary.
Yep.
Okay.
Is this helpful, Wendy?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Anything more about this for now? No? All right, we'll move on. You gonna hang out for general business, Wendy? It's really fun.
He adores us.
All right, minutes, I'll hand this over to you, Katrina.
All right.
I think we got one set, right?
We are six A. All right, can everyone see them?
Yes.
Are they large enough?
To my eye, yes.
Am I speaking or are you going through them? Does anyone have any changes on this first page?
No.
Nope.
No.
And how about the second page? Anyone?
Nope.
Oh, Jennifer will be so happy.
Yeah, good job. Thank you.
I move to accept the meeting minutes of, uh, one October.
Second.
All those in favor, Ray Cook, aye?
Aye.
Tim Cronin, aye.
Tim Hamilton, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
And Ted nods with a smile.
There you go.
All right. You like, you like it when I speak for you, Ted?
I do.
Oh, okay.
Any, anytime.
I appreciate your confidence in me. That's, that's a compliment. Correspondence?
Yes. Um, I don't think the board received this. Um, I do, I will put it up on the screen. Um, we received a right of first refusal for the property at thirty and thirty-two Ash Street.
Yeah, we, we did.
Did receive it.
Oh, you did. Oh, I sent it today, yes.
Did.
Okay.
Yes, it's interesting. These are, remember when the Kelly's, Mrs. Kelly came in and made all those lots long?
Right, right. You know who's buying it? It's the guy who built that huge house.
Yes, there's the house and he's buying the two that, because the price seemed not too bad. And then I looked and it's the two that kind of surround his house. So I'm hoping he's buying it to have the land and not just to develop two more lots. But if he does, they'll be in his backyard anyway, so that'll be.
He put that huge pool in out there. I don't think he wants them looking at him or something.
I think that's right. So, yeah.
And, and, and they're both all power lines as well. I can't imagine anybody paying six hundred thousand dollars for that property.
No, I know, but he paid a lot for the one lot that he did buy before.
Yeah, I'm sure he did.
And a fortune on that house.
And the house too. It took a long time to get it done. Anyway, yeah, my, my.
Right.
We gotta.
So we have to vote on this or, I mean, you know.
No, that was just correspondence.
Yeah.
Well, no, that, that's, that, that.
No, but part.
Coming out of, uh, chapter land.
Right, so at, at, at the next, at the next meeting, I think we need to, uh, because this came up so recently, I think we need to put this on an agenda item for a future meeting. Because if I remember, what we eventually got through as the procedure for right of first refusal, is we make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, no, uh, the Select Board. We make a recommendation to them whether or not we think the town has compelling interest in the parcel. Whether we recommend that the town seek the purchase of the parcel.
Do we need to wait till the next?
Examine the right of first refusal.
I think it should be on an agenda there, maybe people wanna speak.
Yeah, cuz, cuz there might be people, there might be butters or whatnot that want to weigh in on this. And then what, and then, and then we basically, the Select Board has to get written comments or some sort of feedback from all these different boards. And then there's a procedure that they follow after that. So we don't mandate to the Select Board what to do, but we provide the Select Board our best advice. And I think in the past, we've, you know, we've said, well, we don't see anything, but we're not saying it's good or bad. I mean, there's a number of things we can put in that letter.
And so you want this on the next agenda?
Yeah, I think we can do it. Time is of the essence with this stuff, right?
Yeah, we'll have a limited amount of time. I think that you'll get something formal from the Select Board asking for your opinion. This just came in yesterday, so.
Oh, yeah. And we did, I don't know if you saw the email that came by here recently from Angus, but the clock started. Everything is official, so the clock has started to tick. There's a, there's a timeline.
Okay, well, when it's appropriate, then we'll take it up.
So what's that? That's the next, December third. Good lord.
That's something I have never had to deal with in my career.
Huh, there you go.
Uh, first for everything. Well, you're not familiar, Katrina, with the tradition that through the month of December, whenever Brian attends a meeting, he dresses up as Santa Claus?
My hat out, huh?
Yeah, yeah, it's great.
Personally, I'm just, I'm interested in learning more about, um, these bad feelings, um, that in West Newbury you have about the water supply.
Oh, boy.
Oh, oh, please, we, we don't have enough time left tonight to go into this.
But I, I, I will give you, I will give you a two sentence summary. Newburyport owns our surface waters. And then charges us when we need to supplement our water supply with our own water.
At retail rates.
At retail rates.
So do you know that's the exact same situation Danvers and Middleton have?
Were they pissed off at each other about it?
Middleton Pond and then sells it back to Middleton.
There you go.
So you are familiar with this.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I think West Newbury should, I think the Select Board should declare, uh, I don't know, a public opposition day every year. And we all march through Newburyport.
With our dowsing rods.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Water balloons, you throw water balloons at, at, at Newburyport.
That'll be fun.
That would be, that would be at least, uh, therapeutic. All right, uh, excuse me, so that is, was there more correspondence?
There is none.
Okay, administrative details?
Um, is that, is that me?
Yeah.
You talk about administrative details.
Uh, normally I, I would, I, I would say that would be if you have any details you wanna talk about.
I could give you an update on the things I'm working on.
There you go.
Okay. Um, so we're putting the last, the final touches on those, update to the stormwater bylaw. Um, the things that would change the most in it are, um, defining what a project is that, um, is more than one A and R lot. Uh, it's like a common plan of development. They wanna be sure that none of the developments that are developed slowly in phases slips through the cracks and doesn't, um, adhere to our stormwater bylaw. Um, I'm also working hard on updating the website, the MBTA. Um, there was a lot of really good information up on the website, but it was very messy and hard to find. And so I'm turning it all into a timeline so that people can go in and all the links to all the information is still there. But it's just a timeline so that if someone is new to the information, they can go in and just kind of walk through the process that the board had through the, the past year and a half. Um.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
We're also working on, um, trail easement at the end of Major Boyd. Needs to be shifted just a little bit, um, so that it meets up with the public land that was not public at the time the board approved that project. Um, and so we wanted to make sure that that trail easement that was approved as part of the Deer Run Lane. I think it's Deer Run Lane, um, ties into that, that public land.
Right.
Um, and, and that's about it.
By the way, I think it's kinda cool that there'll be a public accessible trail now from Long Hill down, uh, through Major Boyd and then back into the sort of the, the town woods and whatnot, back through that new land.
Courthouse Lane, so I'm.
Courthouse Lane, yeah, I think that's pretty cool.
I don't know where this trail is, but I do plan to walk it with Clay in the next two weeks. Um, because he hasn't been out there either. I mean, we're both brand new to the town.
I should, I should go with you.
By the way, that, that van back there is so magical.
Yeah.
That, uh, yeah, my, my kids and I would hike back there in the wintertime, uh, trespassing, no doubt. And call it Rivendell. Because, because the way the trees and the water and the natural dams and, you know, I mean, it's just, there's something. Like I said, if there are ferries and trolls in West Newbury, they hang out in that land down there.
Wow. Let's hope there are ticks back there too.
Oh, there are ticks everywhere in town.
Ticks everywhere. Now, wait, I, I have a question. This is maybe for Dev. Isn't there a bridge that still needs to get resolved?
Yes, there, um, the, the corner that you go off from the Deer Run Development, um, it, it, the dry part i- uh, is on what used to be Bruce Hamilton's land. Um, and this year probably it's gonna be quite dry and you don't need much of a bridge.
Ah.
Um, it, there's quite a narrow, the wetland area, let's see here.
Yeah, it's completely dry right now. I've, I've walked back.
Oh, is it really? Yeah, okay.
It's right down here though.
Yeah.
Right into here.
Um, but, uh, uh, up above, uh, uh, right, go a little further, Ray, with your cursor, whoops.
Horse?
Go up to the, the, the corner to the northwest. Yeah, now go left a little bit. All right, stop right there. So that's where the trail comes out and you, you would then cross uh, uh, over in, and cross the stream where it's quite narrow there. I mean, technically it's the Indian River. I don't know when it changes its name from Sawmill Brook to the Indian River, but, um, uh, but, uh, the whole area that you've got the cursor now, that's, uh, that's way too wet to do anything with.
Yeah, but if I remember, there's a trail comes right through here somewhere.
Beautiful trail up there, yeah.
Yeah, and this, this is that area that's just, like I said, it's just magical.
Yeah.
And then, and then this wood is the area in here, there's some nice topographic relief. Yeah, it's just, it's, it's gonna be one of the most beautiful trails in all of West Newbury.
Yeah.
Right.
By the way, a little quirky thing, uh, Katrina, is this parcel right here, most people just say that's part of Mill Pond. It's technically the town forest.
See all those trees?
There are a lot of trees on it.
And I've always wondered if like each resident has a right to go in there and chop down one tree per year or something. It has a special designation. It's a separate parcel.
Looks like it used to be a, a Christmas tree farm.
Well, they're red pines and they were probably planted with the idea that they would be harvested one day.
Yeah, and then there's also the cemetery is right in here, I think.
Yeah, yeah, or up a little further, somewhere it's right in there, yeah. The Alms House Cemetery.
Okay, we'll stop here.
Did you guys, did you guys all see, uh, Lisa Grammer's book? Um, it's wonderful, Minute Histories of West Newbury. Um, it, it's articles that she's been publishing monthly in the, um, local blurb, but, um, she put it all together in a book. Um, I have, I have one other item that I just wanna float out there. And that is, a- and we can make it an agenda item, Gray, for another meeting. Uh, but it just pertains to All Saints Church, the Red Brick Church at the east end of town. Um, it is in desperate need of restoration and per- perhaps repurposing for some other reason. Um, we're just not making it as an Episcopal church. Um, we're just not making it as an Episcopal church and we just had a report done on the condition of the building and it desperately needs between seven hundred and eight hundred thousand dollars worth of work. So, um, don't know quite where this is going, but we hope to enlist the support of the town. It's the first building when you come into town that is, I won't call it a public place, but it's a landmark. It's.
Well, shouldn't, shouldn't that, you're, I mean, that strikes me as historical preservation.
It does, that we may be eligible for CPA funds, so.
Exactly.
That was tried, but that was tried a bunch of years ago and turned down by the town, Wendy.
Um, oh, when we were, had, tried to make plans for the hall. We're not talking about.
No, no, it was the church building.
No, it was the hall.
Yeah, that's the way I remember it.
Oh, I didn't think so. I thought it was the church.
I thought it was the church.
Well, in, in any case, uh, yeah, I'm more than happy to discuss it in the future at a planning board meeting, but it strikes me that, um,
We're heading for CPA, but it's gonna take some real support. And I'd like you guys to, to see the building and, and, and take ownership of it. I mean, there are five of us who go to church there on Sunday. We don't own it. We, but I don't wanna be the one to ride it down the tubes and have, have a building that needs to be condemned because the bricks are falling off, so. Um.
I know another building like that in town.
Yeah.
Got a few of them.
Yeah, I mean, do you want it to remain a church?
Um, I want it to be useful. I want it to be repurposed. Uh, the hall, we're in con- uh, uh, talking to the Afghan refugee people and the rector of um, St. Paul's Church, who would like to put apartments in there. Uh, I mean, there's so many, so many hoops that need jumping through, but.
Well, this, this is good stuff and that.
For another meeting, yeah.
Yeah, and that, that church is, is, yeah, we should, we should talk offline.
Okay.
Um.
The.
We, we were.
Interested in it.
Are there, are there other uh, things you've been working on in the background there, Katrina?
Uh, no, I'm.
You got that?
Yep.
Okay, and as far as uh, future agendas?
So what did we decide? We had a bunch of things that we were.
Yeah, I had, I, why do I have the sneaking suspicion that we had important stuff that we put off to December?
Well, the, the non-regular meeting, December tenth, we were gonna do the joint meeting with the select board if that works out.
Yeah, we have Middle Street special permit on December third.
Yeah, December third, resuming the Middle Street.
We could also discuss the uh, right of first refusal land on the third.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, it's, it's the Middle Street stuff, okay.
Katrina, the, the A and R lot on Main Street, I, I was looking for it, to sign it. Weren't we supposed to sign some plans?
Yes, I, I, didn't Jen get ahold of you? Um, we got enough signatures?
Yeah.
Oh, did you come? I'm so sorry. Did you come and it wasn't there?
I came and, yeah, it wasn't there.
Um, I'm sorry, she was supposed to send out an email letting everyone know that we had enough signatures.
Yep, I saw that.
She did send out that email.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Well, very good. If uh, anybody have anything not reasonably anticipated?
No.
No? I thank you all very much, uh, for your attendance tonight, for the input. It's a good meeting. Thank you. Uh, with that, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, Ray Hook, aye?
Brian Murphy, aye. Tim Cronin, aye.
Tim Hamilton, aye.
We'll call it unanimous. Thank you, my, and thank you again, Wendy. Really do appreciate your being here.
Sure.
Have a good Thanksgiving, everybody.